Abraham, the determination of Moses, grant them the wisdom of Solomon and the courage and the compassion of my Lord and my Savior, Jesus Christ. And it is in his name that I offer my prayers this evening. Lord, let it be so. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Harden. We appreciate that very much. If you are able.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Squire Taylor.
Here.
Squire Gentry.
Here.
Squire Varner.
Here.
Squire Harrell.
Here.
Squire Downey.
Here.
Squire Blackford.
Red.
Squire Gill.
Here.
Squire Brown.
We have a special guest with us this evening who I know has a six o'clock appointment. So I want to welcome Woodford County Public Schools new superintendent, Dr. Lori Jones, our school board chair, Mr. Adam Brickler, and her two special guests with her. Welcome, welcome. So, Dr. Jones, Chair Brickler, you are welcome to come to the podium and say hello to the court and our community.
Thank you very much Judge. First of all, I want to thank the fiscal court. You have really worked with the educational system in Woodford County to build a strong partnership and we are really excited to continue that trend. And it's with that that as representative of the Woodford County Board of Education, I'd like to introduce our new superintendent, Dr. Lori Jones.
Thank you.
It's really an honor and a privilege to be the new superintendent here in Woodford County.
And I can tell you from day one, from James Kay to our mayors, to this court, to our community, I have felt the true support and partnership of every single agency here. And it's very clear that you're behind our staff and you're behind our students 100%. And we genuinely appreciate that. It's an honor to be here and I look forward to serving as superintendent. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Thank you. And you will find our fiscal court very willing to partner and work with the schools in any way we can to help you all out. So I know you all have another commitment, but thank you for coming by, saying hello, introducing yourself. And you're more than welcome to be excused. We'll let you guys get out of here. Thank you for being here. If I could take the opportunity for a moment, I would invite members of our Woodford County Fire Department and our fire family to join us. We want to honor a great Woodford Countyan, former Assistant Chief David Pappy Sutherland. We have with us our Woodford County Fire Chief, Mr. Melvin Montgomery, and several of our firefighters, if you all would come in. So I know that it has been a tough period in time, particularly for the Sutherland family and the Woodford County Fire family, as you all laid to rest the great David Pappy Sutherland, who is an esteemed and cherished member of the Woodford County community, known around Woodford County for his kindness, his humility, and his steadfast, everlong service to Woodford County. Former Assistant Chief Sutherland faithfully served the Woodford County Fire Department for 39 years, which is such a testament. He joined the department in 1985 and dedicated his time, his talents, his energy and efforts, and ultimately his heart to the fire service until his retirement, July 15th, 2024. Throughout his career, Assistant Chief Sutherland was a respected leader, a devoted mentor. He demonstrated his unwavering dedication and unshakable resolve and his loyalty to his fellow firefighters in Woodford County as he proudly served our community. In addition to his service to the department, he selflessly gave back through partnerships with local nonprofits, including WHAS Crusade for Children, extending his impact well beyond his emergency response service ongoing to our entire community, which he led to the betterment of. We mourn the passing of such a great Woodford Countyan, a revered individual, a pillar of the fire community. And we celebrate the life and the legacy that Pappy Sutherland leaves behind. And he lives through the many lives that he touched for his decades of honorable service to Woodford County. So today, this fiscal court adjourns in honor of and honors the life, legacy, and service of David Pappy Sutherland, whose memory will be carried forward by the spirit of dedication, compassion, and community through his fellow fighter fighters, through his family, and through our community. So Chief Montgomery, thank you all for being here. We would welcome you to say any words on behalf of the family or the fire family in honor of the great David Sutherland.
You could just call him a great friend, dedicated.
Thank you Chief. Thank you Chief. We extend our thoughts and prayers to you, to your fire family, to his family. I know that he was close with many, many Woodford Countyans, including our road supervisor, Bo Wilson. He was a great man, a great friend to many, and he will be dearly missed. So if we could, we'd honor a moment of silence in reverence and honor of the great David Pappy Sutherland. Amen. Amen. Thank you all for being here. And at this time, on that solemn note, I appreciate your indulgence, Court, but we also have another recognition in honor of Emergency Management Deputy Director, Mr. Johnny Mills. Johnny, if you could come forward. Johnny is here with his family today. And Johnny retired in service to Woodford County just this past Friday. Johnny has selflessly served Woodford County and indeed our Commonwealth for over 47 years. He reflects the epitome of extraordinary dedication, leadership, and deep compassion to the betterment of our community and the communities that Johnny has served. Johnny Mills has been a pillar of strength for our county in times of need. In fact, the times we've needed the most. Johnny has shown resilience and a strong work ethic to support our community through response and recovery through eight major disasters, ranging from extreme winter weather, ice storms, severe winds, tornadoes, and our most recent historic flooding. Johnny's tireless work has helped protect the lives and well-being of our citizens and has served to compassionately care for those who have been in need due to our disasters. His career accomplishments were vast and well-recognized. Johnny was named Kentucky Emergency Management Association's Deputy Director of the Year in 2014. He chaired the Kentucky Emergency Management Association's Certification Committee for five years, and he earned the Certified Kentucky Emergency Manager credential for professionalism in 2018. Our Deputy Director, Johnny Mills, leaves behind a legacy of integrity and courage and a heart for service. Johnny, you will be deeply missed. We will try to fill your big gap that you leave in our Emergency Management Agency and our county government team, but please know that your impact and the help you gave our citizens will echo through Woodford County Emergency Management for years to come. You've helped build a great team and support Director Chandler and our team, and you've inspired folks, including myself in this fiscal court, in your time and service to Woodford County. We thank you, we recognize you, and we honor you today, Deputy Johnny Mills. Ladies and gentlemen.
Just quickly, this is Lisa, my wife. If any of you don't know, my grandson Gabriel Hunter Mills with us tonight. And you notice both of them had their hands on my shoulder? I don't know if they're praying for me or praying for themselves. But, you know, I learned a long time ago in my stint in public education, leadership comes from the top. Right here. Without your leadership, Director Chandler couldn't do what he has done with his program. We wouldn't have had the tools to work with without your support and his direction. He's driven me along screaming and kicking the whole way, especially with the new technology. But, you know, Woodford County is still home. And I told her last week, you know, if it hits the van, call volunteer, call me. I'm here. Woodford County has been fantastic to me when I moved here. And it'll always be the second home besides the birth home. I appreciate your time and your support, guys. Anything I can do to help you holler at me. Thank you.
Thank you so much Johnny. We really appreciate it. Yeah, actually, I got a picture with the mayor earlier outside. Scott, you want me to get that to you?
You just get that.
I can get that to you. And Johnny, I would like to note that both the cities of Midway and Versailles join in their appreciation and support for our joint agency and your service. So thank you, thank you. And you and your family are more than welcome to be excused.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Members of the fiscal court and everybody with us, thank you all for your indulgence. We will move on to our moment for public comment. Anybody wishing to make a public comment to address the court and/or the public, the floor is open for you. Seeing none, we'll approve on to the, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the special meeting and regular meetings, minutes of July 22nd, 2025. Are there any additions or corrections there on? Are there any comments? Are there any objections to approving same as presented? Seeing no objections, I'll approve the minutes as presented. We'll move on to reports. I would like to welcome Mr. Philip Brown from All Points Broadband to give us a update on the broadband project. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for being here.
Oh, it's on now. Okay. The red light threw me off. Good evening, Judge Detective K and members of the fiscal court. Happy to be back in front of you. And we're very excited, I think, at this point in this project. We have, I'll kind of walk you through, you know, the basics. I think I'll start just, you know, in general, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk a little bit about broadband in general. You know, the federal government has a very large program that follows the one that is funding our current project called BEAD. The BEAD program for Kentucky, Kentucky received just shy of 1.1 billion dollars from the federal government a couple of years ago. Kentucky Office of Broadband Development ran an application round that concluded in March 15th. The administration, subsequent to that, made some changes to the program and asked every state to go back and redo their application process. So that process concluded a couple, three weeks ago. So anyone that had applied in that first attempt revised their applications and resubmitted. And so we're now at a point where Virginia and Louisiana have released their plans for their awards for public comments. I think that Kentucky is relatively close, from what I understand, to doing the same. So that has taken up a lot of attention in the broadband space over the last, over the last six months. But for our project, coming from the Kentucky Broadband Improvement Program, it's well underway, has to be completed by December 31st of next year, 2026. Just to recap, it's 1,850 locations that don't have broadband today that will be able to get broadband from All Points Broadband when it's finished, fiber to the home. We're going to construct about 185 miles of fiber in the county. Total project budget again is 16.6 million dollars. All Points Broadband is contributing eight and a half of that 16.6. The county has generously provided 3.16 million dollars in matching funds. And then the state grant was 4.95 million for the total project. So where we are today, and I think you may have heard this at a prior meeting, but one of the things we've done is set up an FAQ page for this specific project. Just wanted to remind everyone that that exists. It's the best place for you to send your constituents when you get questions. And that's hosted on our website. We tried to come up with every possible question that we thought you might get and then provide a good, a good answer to those questions for everywhere from how big's this project, when is it going to be done, to what happens if one of the crews, you know, tears up the yard in front of my house, which of course that would be the right way, but you know, there's, you know, that happens. And the answer to that question is we come along and fix it on the back end. But if you, if you're getting questions that aren't on that FAQ page, feel free to reach out and let me know and we'll, and we'll incorporate that in. It's not a static document. It's one that can, can live and breathe. And it's there to serve as a tool for you all and your community. We completed a required environmental review. I know that Squire Taylor mentioned that, I think at your last meeting. One of the things we're doing is assessing the results of that review. You know, there were some projected impacts to things like wetlands, you know, across our current footprint. So we want to make sure that we're taking that into account as we work through our build plan. You know, you sort of hope for a report that says there's not going to be any impact at all to anything, but that happens. And so you just have to make sure that you're mitigating any impact and planning for it. Where we are today, as far as the contract, as far as the project, is we're moving through our, into our last phase of design. And the best way to describe that, when we put together this project application, we had a high-level design. You know, we took a look, most firms do this through, you know, tools on the internet. You take a look at the roads, you take a look at poles, and you build a route, a planned route. We've completed what's called field-level design. That's a lower level. It's more detailed. That's where we send people out and actually drive the route. And what we're working on now is what is called field-validated design. Now, the difference between a high-level design and a field-validated design is a lot like if you wanted to construct a new building on your property and you ask an architect, create a conceptual drawing of what this building's going to look like. That would be your high-level design. Field-validated design is a full set of architectural plans and specs that you can give to your contractor, and they can then take that and make sure that they have all the materials, and they can actually start pulling permits and building. So we're in that, that phase of field-validated design. It's very, very detailed because it's the sort of thing we put in the hands of our contractors and tell them, it's time for you to go start hanging some fiber. One of the things that we are assessing is, we have about 4,000 poles that we'll need to finish this project in Woodford County. Poles are complicated. You know, they're, they're already there, and that's a benefit. But you have to do what's called make-ready engineering on every pole. So you're literally examining every single pole you're going to use, and you're determining, is it tall enough? Is it, is it strong enough? You know, when was this, when was this pole installed? In a past life, I was working with, I was sort of the owner of a project, much the same way you all might, might think of yourselves. And we had a report that our contractors had gone to a pole installed by KU in 1978. It had passed a structural inspection just the year before, but as soon as a worker got up on that pole, it cracked. And it's because it's made out of wood and it had been installed 40 years prior. So you have to assess the strength and suitability of every pole, all 4,000 poles, before you send a crew out to start hanging a new line on it. You need an agreement from the pole owner that you can attach to their poles. Now, that's a simpler process than it used to be, but you still have to have permission from the pole owner to go and do things with it. So you submit pole applications for all 4,000 poles to the pole owners. We have two pole owners we'll work with. They'll process your applications. They'll tell anybody else on that pole, maybe, maybe the cable company or another fiber broadband provider. All Points is going to get on this pole, and they're going to be at 19 and a half feet above the ground. You need to move up eight inches and you need to move down eight inches and make room for them. We have to wait for those companies to go do that. Now, we do have the ability to go take care of that after a certain time period if no action's been done, but there's still a time period. There are multiple possibilities for delay in the make-ready process. You have make-ready engineering, then the make-ready construction is that situation where companies go out and move their things up and down and get ready for you to actually go out and install and anchor and then be in a position where you can take a truck out and start hanging, hanging fiber, which is quick. That's the benefit. This takes a long time on the front end. It's quick at the end. But we are assessing the validity or the merit of undergrounding a significant portion of this project if we can. It saves us that make-ready engineering and make-ready construction process, which does come at a cost. Probably the single biggest reason for delays in broadband projects is make-ready. And so we're thinking ahead and looking around and thinking, we've gotten directional boring to a port where we can do that at roughly the same cost. It's not the exact same as aerial construction, but it's, it's close enough. And we save a lot of time because we're sending, we'd be sending directional boring crews out onto the roadways, popping down underground, boring through the ground. So we're not digging, digging open trenches, popping up where we need to pop up, and then we're pulling conduit and fiber through that. So there's, there's a lot, there's a lot to recommend that path. We may underground a significant portion of this project. And, you know, I think that that's, that's, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good reasons to do that. So we do have a prime contractor on the, on the, on the project. So we've been working with them and building expectations, building schedule with them. They're assuring us that we can be done on time. I will say the only, the only drawback to underground is if you hit rock. So, you know, rocket, rock changes that. And if you hit a lot of rock, that's where you might pop back up out of ground and use some poles for a span and then, and then maybe drop, maybe drop back down. But with field-validated design, when we get that done, which will be in the next two, three months, that's actually the completion of the very first milestone on this project. We have three big milestones, three big buckets from which we can seek reimbursement from the state for their grant portion. We'd also be doing the same with the county. The first bucket, the first milestone is field-validated design. So that's a major milestone. And I know for you all, it might not look like a lot's happening because we don't have trucks out there hanging fiber, but it is a big, big, big part of any one of these projects. The second milestone or bucket is, is actual fiber. You know, the miles of fiber that we need to hang or bury. And, and then the third is actually locations that those 1,850 that we've, we've identified, once we've passed that house and we're able to respond to a service call, a request for connection, and, and go out and connect that customer, that's our last, our last major milestone in the project. So we are approaching rapidly the conclusion of our first big milestone. And, and again, we're just grateful to be your partner, happy to be here, and we really look forward to being a strong, robust fiber-to-the-home broadband provider for Woodford County.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I'd open up the floor for questions.
Squire Brown's asked me for a card. I'm actually out right now, but I will make sure to, to take care of that.
Yeah, make sure he has your contact. I know you've availed yourself. We appreciate that. Squire Gill, you had a question?
Thank you. Mr. Brown, thank you for being here. And that update is, is great. Is there a place that residents can go to see if they are among the 1,850 who will get fiber to the home?
That is actually on the FAQ page. It's the same, they can enter their address and, and then express interest in being a customer, and, and we take it from there.
And I just sent that FAQ page to the clerk who can send it out to us.
Great, thank you.
So everybody has that for sure.
Put that on the website, please. What's that?
Squire Brown, you're recognized. You might turn on your mic, sir.
If we get that information so we can tell each person to call, is that a problem?
No, not at all. There's actually, there's a contact number on the FAQ page as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Squire Brown. Thank you, Squire Gill. Other questions or comments for Mr. Brown? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Keep up the good work.
Thanks again. I will see you all in three months. I think we've worked out sort of a quarterly appearance. If you need me to come more often, just don't hesitate to ask.
Yeah, we will always reevaluate on the basis of new news or anything that comes up.
Absolutely.
The, the more communication that you have for us, please share it. And, you know, we, we don't need these meetings. This is where we inform the public. But if you want to let us know what's going on any other time, you're always welcome, as you have done.
Sure, sure. Oh, and we, we set this quarterly schedule, by the way, on the idea of we would come in the month after quarterly reporting to the state has been completed. So that's sort of the rhyme and reason behind a, normally it would be July, and then November and January. We are reporting on the project to the state. They send us a request for updates. And so if you all have any reports as well, I think I've helped you all, at least on one. If you have any questions on that, don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you again. Any other questions? Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Brown. You're more than welcome to be excused.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Continuing on with our reports, I'd like to invite Sue Finney from Hunter Town Community Interpretive Park to talk about our amended recreational trails grant resolution that will be before us.
Thank you so much, Judge, and all the magistrates. As you remember, two months ago, I came to talk to you about the Government Resources Accelerating Needed Transportation, otherwise known as GRANT, program of 2024. And we had an application for up, at that point, up to $47,500 in grant funds, which would be basically meeting the match for the city and the county for the recreational trails program grant, if we get it. We won't know till this fall. But we can go ahead and apply for this grant now. We did in June, I mean, we did, you We did in June, I mean, we did, you all authorized the amount, but then when I did some homework and was putting all the numbers in the grant, I discovered, after talking to the Cabinet for Economic Development, that basically we can save another $119 for the match. So the way they figure it, it's on 20% of what the match would be, it's just their match would be, it's kind of, it's all in that email to you, if you want to read it. But, so they just, the way they do the math, it just was a little bit different. And so she said, when I talked to the woman there, basically if we put in the amount at $47,619, that would make our local match 2,381, in other words, $119 in savings. So I'm coming here with, asking you to pass an amended resolution for those amounts, $47,619.
I entertain a motion to adopt the amended resolution, 2025-05A, which was originally adopted in June of this year, authorizing the GRANT program for up to $47,619 in funds, with the Cabinet of Economic Development to be used towards Huntertown Community Interpretive Park. Motion, Ms. Squier Gill, Second Ms. Squier Blackford. Open up the floor for any questions or comments. Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that amended resolution is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue.
Sure enough.
Hall of Famer.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. Moving on with reports, Madam Treasurer.
I wanted to address the question in the public hearing about the property taxes.
Yeah, thank you.
So we tried really hard to be very conservative in our estimates for this year's budget. We estimated between 1.9 and 2 million for receipts for property taxes, so lowering the rate does bring us well within that estimate, so I just wanted to answer that question.
And I would, just since you addressed it, I would bring it up that we don't have exact figures, it's always an estimate, and we always conservatively budget revenues in order to accurately, as we can, budget expenses, so.
Yes, and another part of that question, I think he asked why we didn't do it prior to the budget. It's because we have to wait to get our certified assessments from the state, which don't come in until August, so that was the answer to that question.
Excellent point.
For tonight's balance, we have $14,016,468.35.
And we need to...
Yes, so the initial budget amendment that we did had a miscalculation for carryover for the road department. The municipal road aid, county road aid amounts were not included in there. So the first budget amendment that we did, we need to just void that one, and this is to amend that one. So we will go through the first reading again, and then send it to DLG to approve, and then it'll come back for second reading.
So I entertain a motion to withdraw the originally first reading ordinance of 2025-08 Budget Amendment Number One, realizing unbudgeted receipts in the carryover from fiscal year 2024 to '25. Is there a motion to withdraw same? Motion, Ms. Squier Brown, Second Ms. Squier Gentry. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that ordinance, 2025-08, is withdrawn unanimously. So as a way to amend that and move forward, we need a motion to have the first reading of ordinance 2025-11, which is the amended budget amendment number one, realizing unbudgeted receipts in the amount of 3.1 million and some dollars in carryover from the fiscal year 2024-25. Motion, Ms. Squier Brown, to have the first reading of same?
Second.
Second, Ms. Squier Gentry. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the first reading has been approved. Mr. County Attorney, sir?
Yes, Judge, and to clarify, so this will be the first, so we will have to have the second, since the prior ordinance has been withdrawn. So this relates to your budget amendment for fiscal year 2025 to 2026, to be amended as follows, relative to the increased-decrease of receipts of the following funds to include unbudgeted receipts from. And they're listed from prior-year carryover, transfer out from the general, and then road, prior-year carryover, road transfer in, federal grants, FEMA disaster recovery funds, federal grants, prior-year carryover, opioid abatement settlement funds, prior-year carryover, sheriff's asset forfeiture, prior-year carryover, county clerk permanent storage fees, prior-year carryover, American Rescue Plan Act, prior-year carryover. The revenues and appropriations being decreased in the amount of $3,101,655.54. So this being a first reading, we'll have the second reading. We had a three-week gap last time, so I guess at our first reading, or at our first meeting in September, September the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Anything additional, have any questions for the Treasurer? Seeing none, appreciate all your hard work and mail. I'd like to invite Director Chandler for a flood update, flood recovery update.
Thank you, Judge. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to start with a quick Johnny story.
Yes, please.
And he's well aware, because he was there. You know, I'm able to do my job because of the great deputies that you all have allowed the department to have. And so one of the responsibilities of a deputy is to be able to stand in the absence of the director, which they've all done many times. So one time, I think it was after a fiscal court meeting, I left and didn't take my phone off-fibrate, went home, went to bed, and in the middle of the night, dispatch tried to get ahold of us. They couldn't get ahold of me, so they got ahold of Johnny, and like a good deputy, he came and got me, knocked on the door, woke us up, and then I went to the call, so. I don't know why, he just didn't go there himself, but he notified me, so that was good.
Riding around with you, Director Chandler, for a few months in the flood, I've heard some other funny Johnny stories.
There's enough of them that we could stay here tonight, but maybe tomorrow too, but we'll leave those for another time. He'll leave a big hole in the program. I think there may be a personnel order to take up later, and then in discussion with you, Judge, about what new staffing looks like, augmented, do we wait a little bit, go through a hiring process? So more to come on that.
Thank you. Thank you for that update.
Onto the flood. Leaving here after the last court meeting on July the 24th, the phones started blowing up with news about the public assistance declaration that I had reported to you during the meeting, had not been issued yet. So a lot of things have happened since then, as you could imagine, including our attendance on the 5th at an applicant-agent briefing. We went to the one in Ohio County, because that worked best with our schedules. What that means is, when you look on the financial reports in that Fund 30, and any other expense that we can find that's potentially eligible, we stand to receive or recover 87% of the number that's on the financial report. So that's going to be a big help for our fiscal recovery, and we will do everything that we can to make sure that we try to get everything qualified. Each political jurisdiction has its own recovery process, so the city of our sales will go through that, Midway will go through that, the school district has eligible expenses, the fire district, the health department, et cetera. So the number that's reflected in the financial report is just the fiscal court umbrella of organizations. There's much more money that's been spent on flood, disaster response, and recovery. So the public assistance is a great thing. One thing that did not come with the public assistance declaration, which is highly unusual, is the hazard mitigation program. Kentucky, along with every other state that received a public assistance declaration that night, and the following day, were denied hazard mitigation. So we are working with Kentucky Emergency Management to appeal that. We've got some great data from our previous hazard mitigation activity that can support the appeal process, and we won't give up on that just yet. However, while we were starting the meeting tonight, I received a message from Logan Stevens at USDA. Their application to National USDA was approved, so we are actually only waiting on the contract at this point for the emergency watershed protection buyouts. And you took action on that at the last meeting, that would allow the judge and the county attorney to make sure there's nothing in there that would cause discomfort down the road for the county government to proceed with offering residents in the affected areas with an option for a buyout in the case. The emergency watershed program has an additional incentive above the fair market value that's determined if it was a primary residence, or if they were a renter living in an income property. So that's great news. That offers an option for the families that are stuck, that are still trying to recover months later. As of yesterday, I had a note from the Emergency Response Commission meeting, it was reported that there are still 615 Kentuckians that are displaced from their homes from the February and the April flooding statewide. And I know for a fact that there are multiple Woodford County families in that boat, so we're continuing to do everything that we can to help them. The USDA is good news, the public assistance is good news, but there's still a lot of work ahead of us.
Thank you, Director Chandler, and we will continue to stay on the forefront of that. Just as a reminder, the motion allowed us to approve that contract with the USDA for the NRCS buyout program, the watershed program. And if there are no objections, since we have come to a new meeting and we don't have that document, no objections, we will proceed, the county attorney and myself, in reviewing that as soon as it's received. We will share that via email, and we will move forward with approving it, as long as it meets the requirements of the county attorney. Seeing no objection on that, we'll move forward. Anything additional, Director Chandler?
Judge, I would just invite any of the magistrates, if there's any questions. I know, Squier Gentry, you have a significant part of your constituency, and Squier Brown along the river. If there's anything that you're hearing that we could be doing better, we're always open to that feedback.
Thank you, Director Chandler. Thank you so much. Keep up the good work. I would deliver a report from Solid Waste and Recycling. They requested to surplus a 2005 Chevy Trailblazer, an '06 Ford F-250 with liftgate, and an '09 F-250. We need to move to surplus those vehicles. Motion by Squier Carl.
Second.
Second, by Squier Downey. Are there any questions on that? Those items will be authorized for review and sale at GovDeals? Seeing no question?
I was getting ready to ask that question, so.
Yes, yes. So long as they meet the requirements to go on GovDeals, that's how they'll be surplused. Seeing no additional questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion to surplus, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. I will say, on behalf of Road and Recycling, this Saturday, August 16th, is the Kentucky River Sweep, and that will be at 9:00 a.m. at the Clifton Boat Ramp. And it's an important year to get back down at the river. It's a little bit later because of the flood, and we want to hopefully get down there and show some love to the river, and get it cleaned up as we normally do. And as you can imagine, there's a lot more to clean up than normally there is. So we just welcome everybody and inform everybody of that. Madam Clerk, is that the full report from Solid Waste and Recycling? Seeing that it is, from my office, you all, via email, approved the execution of the Woodford County Conservation deed. That was on August the 6th, so I need a motion to ratify same. Motion, Ms. Squier Varner, Second Ms. Squier Gill. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Any other department or agency have a report for the court? Seeing none, move on to the general orders and unfinished business, claims, the bills to be paid by this county are before you. Are there any questions or comments on any of the bills to be paid? Seeing no questions on the bills to be paid, are there any objections to any of the bills to be paid? Also seeing no objections, I will approve the bills to be paid without objections. I do need a motion to approve the transfers as presented. Motion, Ms. Squier Blackford, Second Ms. Squier Taylor. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. Moving on to the personnel order, I need a motion to approve that as presented.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Squier Gentry, Second Ms. Squier Carl. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. I will, as a matter of personnel order, we have a maintenance specialist position in the maintenance department, and I would like to ask the fiscal court to open and advertise that position. Is there a motion for same? Motion, Ms. Squier Varner, Second Ms. Squier Gentry. If I have any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries, and I'll work with Director Wade on that. Moving on, we need to take up some old business, the proposed second reading of ordinance 2025-09, zoning amendment 197 Browns Mill Road. Is there a motion to approve second reading of same? Motion, Ms. Squier Gill. Second, Ms. Squier Varner. Are there any questions? This is the final approval of same. Seeing no questions, all those in favor of having the second reading, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Attorney, sir?
Yes, Judge. This would be a summary second reading of that ordinance relating to a zoning map amendment, general development plan for Sea Island Soil Company LLC at 197 Browns Mill Road, R1B to A1 District, be it ordained by the fiscal court, that that amendment is in compliance with your comprehensive plan, so therefore, the Sea Island Soil Company property of 197 Brown Mill Road, Versels, containing 1.19 acres, is rezoned from R1B to A1, and the Versels Midway Woodford County zoning map shall be amended to reflect this change. This being a second reading, this ordinance is final, although it does need to be published in summary form within 30 days.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Judge.
Moving on to new business, we need to have the proposed first reading of ordinance 2025-10, general taxation. Is there a motion for first reading of same? Motion, Ms. Squier Gentry, Second Ms. Squier Taylor. Open up the floor for any questions or comments regarding the first reading of ordinance And again, this is to lower the tax rate for the fiscal court. We held a public hearing, as required by statute, prior here too. We did receive one comment in the form of a question. Other than that, I think we have, we received no other public comment, and this ordinance is ready for a full vote of the fiscal court. So seeing no comments or questions, the motion on the table. I would entertain a vote. All those that are prepared to have the first reading of ordinance 2025-10, lowering the tax rate for Woodford County for property taxes, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Attorney, sir?
Yes, Judge, thank you. Judge, I was telling you in our pre-meeting, I think this will be the 32nd first reading I've done of an ordinance of general taxation for Woodford County, and I don't recall the first digit of that rate being a five. So it's, this is, I may be mistaken, but I think this is the first, so commend the court. This would be an ordinance of general taxation for the year 2025 in Woodford County, Kentucky, where as your total assessment of all real property, including new property, subject to the taxation, as of January 1st of this year, is $3 billion, yeah, $3,574,753,678. And additionally, the value of real estate for public service companies in the county is $17,177,042. The tax rate of 5.90 is proposed for 2025, and would generate county revenue of $2,109,105. The tax rate of 5.90 is proposed for 2025 and would generate county revenue of 2 million 109,105 dollars and would require a public hearing, but would not subject the tax rate issue to a recall vote. And you did conduct that public hearing at your regular meeting. You moving to adopt the rate of 5.90 cents per $100 of assessed value of both real and personal property. So be it ordained by this fiscal court, there's hereby levied and imposed an adwarement tax of 5.90 cents per $100 of assessed value of both real and personal property located in Woodford County and subject to taxation as otherwise dictated by adoption of this rate and as set and established by the Commonwealth. Tax rates are also levied and imposed at the rate of cents per $100 of assessed value on property in Woodford County as follows. Your bank deposit rate, .025, motor vehicle and watercraft, 9.4. This being a first reading. Then we do need to schedule it for a second reading and then we'll be final.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you Judge.
On the, on that note, we have the tax rates for some outside agencies that we need to accept. The Woodford County Extension District for 2025 as presented. Is there a motion to accept that tax rate?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Blackford, second by Squire Gill. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. We also received the Woodford County Fire Protection District tax rate as presented and we need to accept that as we did last year as well. All the, is there a motion? Squire Varner, second by Squire Taylor. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. We move into our Flex Funds Agreement Resolution 2025-07. We need to approve the Rural Secondary Program Agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky, the Transportation Cabinet, the Department of Rural and Municipal Aid and the Fiscal Court for the Rural Secondary Funding in the amount of 170,976 dollars and authorize the judge executive to sign any and all documents related thereto. Is there a motion for that along those lines? Motion by Squire Brown, second by Squire Gill. Are there any questions thereon? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. We also need to adopt the Resolution 2025-07 approving the execution of the Rural Secondary Road Program Agreement. And I will allow Squire Gill to make that motion and she was first and make the last motion. Squire Gill, Squire Taylor, alright, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving the execution of the Rural Secondary Program Agreement. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to adopt said resolution, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion too is approved unanimously. We received paving bids for Four Acre Road, Hefner, Oregon Road, Buck Run Road, Germany Road and Watts Ferry. I would entertain a motion to accept the bid upon the recommendation of Road Supervisor Bo Wilson for Mago Construction in the amount of 78,500, excuse me. You switched them up. Oh yeah. So. So hold on one second, I'll get this right. So to clarify, we need a motion to approve the bid from Mago Construction in the amount of 78,570 dollars for paving of Four Acre Road, commonly known as Seven Creeks, as recommended by Road Supervisor Bo Wilson. Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Carl. Are there any questions for the supervisor? Again, 78,570 dollars for the paving of Four Acre Road. Got to pave over Seven Creeks to get there. Seeing no questions, all those in favor of accepting the bid from Mago Construction as presented, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. The next motion would be accept the bid additionally from Mago Construction in the amount of 237,000 dollars, 237,150 dollars for paving partial parts of Hefner, Oregon, Buck Run, Germany and Watts Ferry as recommended by Road Supervisor Bo Wilson. Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Taylor. Are there any questions thereon? I would just note that the court clerk wanted to make sure that our partial parts of the roads were in a separate motion and so that's why these are separated from Four Acre. There is a motion to accept the bid. All those in favor of acceptance of saying, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion also carries unanimously. I would like to entertain a motion to advertise and begin the bid process for Shore Acres Road using our Flex Funds. Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Brown. Are there any questions? The one thing that I would note is that Oregon, Buck Run, Shore Acres in particular were heavily damaged by the flood and is additional to their normal wear and tear also is a reason for their need in paving. But two floods in one year really impacts roadways. Motion, the motion is to advertise the bid process for Shore Acres. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. We'd all, I'd also like to recommend a motion to advertise and begin the bid process for sections of Hunter Town Road as needed. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gill, second by Squire Blackford. Are there any questions thereon? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. I have asked Road Supervisor Bo Wilson to do some estimates on that. We're going to have to, when we get that bid back, go through that, work through the process. But I appreciate your attention to that matter. Is that the sum of our paving bid requests? Yes. We sent you all the HMB Professional Engineers Work Order Number One for the pursuant to the Continued Service Agreement for the Paines Depot Bridge Project. I need a motion to approve that Continued Service Agreement and allow me to sign saying.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Taylor, second by Squire Brown. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. That project is, continues to be a good project and look like our county contribution may be even less than we initially anticipated, which is good. The last item of new business would be our facility use request for the opening of the courthouse for Saturday, September 6th from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the Twilight Festival and Sunday, October 26th, 2025, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the Spooktacular. Is there a motion to approve those additional courthouse facility use requests? Motion by Squire Brown, second by Squire Varner. I would just reiterate a comment that the county attorney shared with me. Yes, we are talking about Halloween. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries. I need to also, I sent you all the Compass contract for your review. I would entertain the motion to approve that contingent of the county attorney and the judge executive's final approval. Can we have that motion?
Second.
Motion by Squire Blackford, second by Squire Taylor. Again, Compass is providing the mental health services for our EMS department. And so we'll go through that contract, make sure it's good to go, but we'll go ahead with this motion and get the contingent approval. So are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving contingent, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk. That seems to be the full amount. I will say before we go into announcements that the Woodford County Farm Bureau Rodeo is this weekend and you all have each been given a couple of tickets, I believe. That is Friday, August 15th and Saturday, August 16th at the Woodford County Fairgrounds, the annual Woodford County Farm Bureau Rodeo. It's going to be a big time in Woodford County this weekend.
Judge.
Mr. Brown, yes, Squire Brown.
Jeremy had to leave, but he wanted me to tell you all, any children under 10 gets in free, so they don't need a ticket.
Any children under 10 get in free? That's excellent. Thank you Squire Brown for sharing that. That does not count as our announcements, so anybody else is welcome to continue your announcements and I'll start with you, Squire Downey, sir.
Thank you Judge. I just wanted to remind folks, school starts back this week, so anticipate probably heavier congestion downtown around the schools, especially out at the high school. So everyone just be patient. We've got, you know, our little ones are being dropped off, so everyone just mind our roadway safety as best as they can. Thank you.
You've got a lot of kids in that system. Squire Black.
Yes Judge, I'm making announcements for Woodford County Habitat for Humanity. They are building their 44th house here for sales this Saturday, August 16th at 9:00 a.m. on 252 Douglas Avenue. In order to come and help them out, you need no experience. They'll teach you how to build, ask you to park across the street at Crosspoint Church over there and lunch provided. So they say every hand makes a difference, so volunteers needed and if you're not doing anything, go over and carry a bucket of nails or slam a hammer. Thank you.
Thank you, Squire Blackford. Squire Gill.
Nothing, thanks.
Thank you, Squire Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you. Squire Taylor, sir.
Just want to also wish everybody a happy back to school and safe. I know it can be a mess sometimes as people figure out, I'm going to be a part of that going to the middle school for the first time with my daughter. Hopefully we can get there successfully.
That's what I should see. Squire Gentry.
Just as you said earlier, the River Sweep is Saturday from 9:00 to 12 at the Clifton Boat Ramp.
Thank you, Squire Gentry. Squire Varner, sir.
Just to reiterate, rodeo this weekend, come out and have a good time. Thank you.
Very, thank you. Squire Carl.
Nothing Judge, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. County Attorney, sir.
Judge, the, I'll ask Madam Clerk if we could dock it on the agenda for the next meeting. Need to take action on a couple of opioid litigation matters. They're pretty simple in terms of the decision-making process, but I'm going to need an or, a vote of the court authorizing me to participate in this. So if that could be on the agenda for the next meeting, I'll explain it then and get your vote then.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
We have the deadlines coming up in September and October.
Woodford Sun.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm happy to announce that I might see you chuckling, but this is good news. After 12 months and the last two months without any air conditioning, the Woodford Sun's renovation is complete. Former Versels Mayor Brian Traugott will no longer be able to declare the Woodford Sun the biggest eyesore on Main Street. We will be, we will be moving into our new space and it will be open a week from Monday for the public. We'll have an event. Hope everybody will come, look at it, check it out. Jennifer Chandler and Lucy Chandler deserve all the credit, but as the oldest business in Woodford County, I am really, really proud. And I also want to personally thank the support of the fiscal court and just generally all the encouragement you all have given us these last couple of years of we have, as we have been adjusting our business models and whatnot. But we're pretty certain we've got a very bright future, particularly our investigative journalism, Mr. G. So that's it.
Thank you, Woodford Sun. I do recall, I'll never forget the summer when we did the HVAC renovation and it was like 99 degrees on that third floor. Some of the kindest, sweetest people I've ever met got a little hot under the collar. It's hard to work when it's hot, so thank you for sticking it out. Back to school is a big deal in the community and on Friday will be the first class that will be taught by Woodford County EMS for our EMS training program that is a partnership with the school. It's one of the biggest programs and one of the most important things I think that this fiscal court has done. And we will be creating a direct pipeline from the classroom to career path for some of the most important first responders in our community. And we continue our efforts under the great leadership of Freeman Bailey to become one of the best EMS services in the state. I want to, I should have took the opportunity to thank Dr. Lori Jones and the school system for their partnership. But when I'm thinking of Assistant Director Kent Berry and former paramedic supervisor Chad Ford, those were gentlemen who started in Woodford County High School, made a career in Woodford County of serving and saving lives and that's what we want to produce. We want to produce the best and brightest and the best place to cultivate and grow them is right here in our hometown. So it's very exciting and I'd welcome everybody to come to the old high school, the board office now, this Friday at 10:00 a.m. and we're going to introduce ourselves to the new class and get that program kicked off. That's the first day of classes. So thank you all. Thanks for all you're doing. Lot going on in the county, a lot of good things going on. We do adjourn tonight in honor of former Assistant Fire Chief David Pappy Sutherland. Keep him and his family in your prayers and his fire family as well. Thank you. God bless you and may God bless Woodford County.